We're ready? Okay, welcome everyone to the Stratford. What is the date?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, a school board meeting. While in public, no votes were taken. We discussed student matters, staff, legal, and special ed matters. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to open for public comments. We have no public right here, right now. What time is it? It's seven oh eight. So we'll keep public comments open for thirty minutes. We are going to skip down right now to our first presenter. We're very happy to have our middle school dean, Jeffrey Merrill, here to review some of the goals for that middle school.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a PowerPoint. Sorry, I'm not as good as, I'm not as good as Natalie. But I did create a memo, so I printed out hard copies for everyone. I just gave one to Rob, sent it to the electronic copy booth as well, so we can get that up. So in the middle school, I think, you know, it's been a good year of growth, a good year of learning for me personally, as a first-year administrator. And I also think we're, we're starting to see some improvements from, from the beginning, right? I really tried to focus on those three main goals that, that we were given at the beginning of the year, of curriculum instruction, behavior and communication. Kind of broke down what we've been doing, what the focus has been since the last time I spoke. Because I think a lot's actually been, we've got a lot of good things that I get to report on. I'm not going to read through this per se, I'll just pick on some highlights and then I'll field any questions that we have. So when it comes to that strengthening instruction across our curriculum, one, one thing I did want to highlight is I've been seeing an increase in staff, staff collaboration, both amongst the teams and then also that vertical kind of, of collaboration I've seen as well. Been seeing that we've been able to have it during some PD days that we've had, but even during the school day itself. I've been seeing it in the mornings. Making sure it's more focused on student engagement, making sure the kids in the fifth grade are prepared for sixth grade, sixth grade to seventh, seventh, eighth, and then eighth to, to ninth. Our eighth grade team is continuing to have those Bridges meetings with Co-Brown at the apartment. So every sending school has that. And I get a copy of all the notes and that they're really talking about some of the skills that the kids need as they head in to help us then build, kind of, not down from there, but that we can then prepare them properly where we need to. The big thing I wanted to make sure I addressed too is math. So we've been getting, we've been using our iReddy diagnostics, we've been seeing improvements on there. Almost every grade is above fifty percent, like, almost fifty, every, every single student is on, more than half the, the grade is on pace to have that growth. And that's what we need if we're going to try to fill in those gaps. And so that's been amazing to see. Our, our math interventionist, Angelina Gagnon, has been, has been invaluable this year. She really has, helping us put those kind of MTSS supports, making sure that kids are getting what they need. But then also working with Rob Kaseyak still and having them meet with our math team through that coaching, modeling lessons, collaborative planning, has been, it's been amazing. And I, I'm actually excited to hear for what we have in store in the, in the coming year with the math team. They have some pretty cool things they've been, they've initially started to plan. Not too much for me to talk about now, but, but I have some exciting meetings coming up of how we can continue that math instruction as Rob especially moves to the elementary school. And then the big thing there is, is, is it's continuing to improve that teacher capacity and student learning outcomes. We're also continuing to enhance and align our academic intervention block. We talked about that math intervention, I believe I sent a framework to you guys a couple months ago. And, you know, it, when you're introducing something new mid-year, we have to work out some things still. But we're still continuing to review and group students based off of the data we have for them and their needs, making it more of students getting what they need, not just that extra thirty minutes of math. I think it's been good. We've had some kids who have been utilizing it amazingly, you know, seeing a different teacher every day, seeing the same teacher. But we're also seeing those coordinating of supports with interventionists, special educators, classroom teachers. So having, again, that kind of tiered level of support has been, has been good to see. And finally making sure, you know, the other day, we're making sure that all of our students are, regardless of their ability level, have access to, to curriculum and to that ability to grow. And that kind of leads to that, that last little bit that I put in. We are having some initial professional development sessions centered on meeting the diverse needs of our learners. So my background comes from universal design of learning. It's the leadership that I, the leadership role that I was able to carry as a teacher is that facilitator. And I know Melissa was at one of the trainings that we ran with the staff. And, and it was just starting to teach them how we can remove barriers to learning, right? And that if the more we can make the curriculum accessible, the better off it is for our students. Sometimes it's just taking that first three minutes to tell them a quick strategy we, that they, that they're introduced to is taking that first three minutes, what do you need right now to have a successful, to have a successful hour? And I, I saw a couple of teachers doing that, putting a three-minute timer on the board the next, that following week, saying, okay, what do you need? Students feeling a lot more engaged. Quick little things like quickly coming up with grouping partners just at random, you know, scaffolding these groups, just sharing them kind of tricks of the trade, I think was, was amazing to see them. They liked it. And seeing them that following week and that even through now implementing some of those things. So I think we have some good things there to make it, again, more of that universal design. In regards to the behavior supports, just continuing with our structure inconsistency has really been the key here. We hit the ground running and I did, with that early on in the year was kind of my, that was my focus. I think now it's just maintaining what we're doing. Collaborate, continuing that collaboration amongst staff, improving, improving our family engagements, making sure that parents are aware of what's going on in the building. And then having that stronger focus on proactive approaches, right? So the less that I see a student, the better it is, right? Because that means there's proactive approaches being done. And, and they're helping us address these challenges and, and we're trying to, again, create that safer and more supportive school environment. You know, and I think especially, you know, we're heading into April, the week before spring break. This is the challenging time of the year. It is, right? We've had some, some increase of just those minor kind of judgy behaviors in our classrooms, but that's expected. I had it when I was, when I was in mission, when I was a educator. This, the time, it was getting nicer, right? The lawns are starting to get greener, kids just want to be outside, but then we still have two-plus months left of the school year, right? So nothing out of the norm. It's expected to happen, whether or not now. But overall, just continuing to maintain it. And then finally, communication. So enhancing communication with all, I think this is where I've, I've identified areas of growth for myself. So that's actually been exciting to, to find, you know, just continues to improve, where I need to continually improve. One ways we've done, I know Natalie touched base on those newsletters, so we have a middle school newsletter now. And we're continuing to look at ways to improve that, to make sure that we're giving access, that we're, that parents have, the middle school have access to those, to the information that, that's, that they need, right? That it's not just splitting off just for the sake of splitting off. And so we're continuing to try and find ways to enhance that, as well as continuing to make sure that that staff newsletter that, that we send out is updated as well. Making sure that we have common expectations, right? Regularly take an inventory of ourselves. Clear systems of expectations and accountability are important, again, especially mid-year, when that's ten, tend to find those start to break down a little bit. And then continuing ways to streamline our behavior documentation. So we're always looking, how can we improve something? If we need to throw something out mid-year and restart it, we're willing to, right? Starting to look at, you know, right now, the staff, when I are talking about how, how are we, are we doing a proper office referral system? Should we improve this somehow? And that's kind of where we are, there. Just again, always trying to find a way to improve, right? I know I was talking to Rob a little bit about it today. You know, I think a lot of us like to wait, oh, that's a summer job? And it's, no, we, we can fix it now. There's nothing stopping us from doing that. So I do commend the staff and, and, and the students in, in that kind of ability to build the life, right? That we're willing to change things if we need to. You know, as long as it's backed by data, backed by what's best, in the best interest of our students in our building. And I wanted to give you guys a quick update of kind of looking ahead. Just those initial areas of focus that I'm thinking building off of what we're having. So if I was to have goals for my, for the middle school, it would be centered around possibly these four things. So expanding differentiated practices, supporting professional development for that differentiation. So making sure that staff have the ability to be trained with that expectation, I think is important. Continuing curriculum work across all content areas, always making sure that, I think, you've never done it, right? You haven't, you've never finished. I'm making sure that we're vertically aligned, beginning to work with even down to the fourth grade up to the fifth grade, making sure that that transition is smooth, as smooth as we possibly can make it into the middle school. Enhancing our instructional coaching, leadership capacity. I wanted to put that on because I'm, I'm a lifelong learner, I'm a lifelong educator, right? So making sure that I'm growing and that people who are supporting the staff are growing as well. And then finally strengthen our intervention systems, both academic and really just finding more areas of growth. So that's kind of where, where we are. I think we're going to have a good, a good spring. We have trips coming up, some eighth-grade trip, we have nature's classroom, and we have Starbury Bank. Forget where the seventh grader goings, my apologies, Eric.
I don't know either.
There's a day, it's like a day trip. I know they have a field trip coming up in that time as well. My apologies to the seventh grader, if any parents are watching. So we have some exciting things as we come back. And the next thing you know, it's going to be June. So, you know, it's, it's all fun things.
That's great. Thank you, Jeff. Do you have any questions for Jeff?
I have a question about communication.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've heard me say this before, but I don't like technology. I'm getting bombarded from every direction, from like, what? I know Alma, I understand a lot of information, isn't Alma?
Right.
I get a weekly email from Google Classroom saying it's an update for what my daughter's done.
Right.
I've never checked it this year. In the, previously, it never aligned with what actually, it, it's like it came in two weeks after the work had been done.
Right.
So I, I don't understand, well, it doesn't seem up to date as far as the information goes, or it didn't at the time. Are those the two places I should be looking to find out what exactly is, what exactly my student is up to?
When it comes to the classroom, I, I don't have a, a, a full number of the staff that use Google Classroom. I know almost all of them do. I can certainly get that information. Generally, those are the two spaces though, that, that, you know, your student information system and then Google Classroom generally where they're going to put their, those electronic versions of the assignments, possibly where kids have to turn them in, right? I used it as like a Dropbox, right? And, and there's a grade book element in Google Classroom, right? I know I struggled with having that open. And then we had like our version of Alma when I was a teacher. So I always told students and parents, check there for their grades and the competencies, and then check Google Classroom for, you know, the work, right? If they've turned it in. But it also could be, I've had students where they've turned something in, hard copy, and I didn't mark it as turned in on Google Classroom. I don't have the ability, when I was at least teaching, to, to mark it as present, so it still gets counted as missing in there, right? Google Classroom's not a perfect system, right? Especially when you have a, a place where you put, a separate place where you put and report your grades, right?
Right.
That would probably be the best, if I could give.
Go.
Yeah.
Kind of pay attention to both of those. And then I guess I would learn what, which ones of her classes are updated on Google Classroom? Because they might not all be, is that?
Yeah, that, that would be where, and I think that's something we can certainly, and talk about how we can improve communication. Certainly, some good feedback to see, is there a way we can make sure we streamline it, right? That, that at least, team-wide, the word, they're all doing it the same way. So that it's clear to parents, right, of, in this case, the seventh and eighth, right? That this is where you can find this information, this is where you can find this information. Certainly think is something that we can, we can start to look at to, to make sure we're improving. I don't like getting all the notifications.
And I fully admit, I'm probably like the worst-case scenario when it comes to that. Just all that information just seems like too much.
One of the things I know that Natalie and Jeff were both trying to do this year is to have that weekly newsletter be the landing spot for kind of everything. So my question to you would be is, could the newsletter say what you just said to Eric? Could it say, hey, if you're interested in looking and verify this first, right?
Right.
Before you add it, but if you're interested in knowing your child's grades or what assignments are complete, et cetera, go to Alma and maybe just a quick little description of how to do that. And then if however you're looking for the individual assignments or whatever, then you want to go take a look at Google Classroom and verify with your staff that they're updating it regularly. And then, once again, so I'm thinking that newsletter, which comes once a week. Every week your inbox has that newsletter in it. If it had that in there, then you would have that as your way to gain access, because it's on the link.
We have plenty of stuff in the newsletter that's kind of anchored there, it's just always, it's there. It becomes the thing where parents just kind of scroll by it, but it's there, right? And it's, it's a good resource, it's a good reminder. You know, if a new family comes in, it's there, right? It's just that extra support. So I certainly think that's something we can, we can look at doing.
So what I have found is that Google Classroom is where the kids are actually working on things. So that's where they go to, like if there's enough video that they're supposed to watch or worksheet that they have to down, they have to complete electronically, it's on Google Classroom.
Okay.
But Alma is where most, where I would like to see some teachers do it, have their to-do list, which is almost like an agenda assignment where parents can see, you can go to Alma and see what your child needs to do. Either it's a missing assignment or it's a homework assignment, and it's all in one place. So I don't see that on Google Classroom, but Google Classroom to me, you do get those reports, but it's really where the kids are going to, to, to work during the day. Alma is where we can find the grades, their schedules. And then I like, not all teachers, I wish all, the whole team would put their assignments on Alma.
Yeah.
And it's one place where there's a to-do list. And, and that is, I know we've talked about this in the past, I think Katrina brought it up during budget time. You know, do we really still want to do physical agendas?
Yeah.
Because everything is electronic now. So I know for the little kids, maybe they still need that, but, so that's just something to think about. But I, but I do think the Alma, the, there's that to-do section that really highlights, like if your child's missing something, there are teachers that will put right there what they're missing. And so you will get, as a parent, can then follow up.
Do the students have access, like your own access to Alma in middle school?
Yes, yeah, they do.
And they check the grades?
Yeah.
And they can see all the variants, most teachers have the grades.
I know the to-do list is something that several staff members are very good at, at using. It's something we're going to try to kind of train the trainer and, and just give options, like this is an option for you. And if most of the staff, or we all agree that that is a good thing to use, we can make it a universal practice. Because that, that's something we're thinking of a way to use. Several of us were speaking about how, how we can use that to, to actually help improve our academic intervention time. Because then we can, as a, if a student came to me who I don't have, right? And, and needs that extra support, I'd say, check your to-do list and we're all using it. But that's something I know that, that, that's kind of in the pipeline to present to the, to the staff and as, as an option. And again, trying to see, is this, would this be utilized correctly, right? So yeah, I know I've told, I said, when I met with the five, six parents in the fall, I remember giving the advice, like, keep your kid off of Alma. Coming from a high school back, high school teacher, my kids were checking their grades, all the, did you grade it? You just submitted it to me.
Right.
I don't, I did not turn it around yet. I always said, students should be checking who, when I was teaching, I'd have my kids say, Google Classroom, check that, and then have your parents check the Alma, right? But.
I love that idea about using that to-do list for intervention, because I think it also, if the students check that too, and whoever helps them sign up for their intervention period, it gives them guidance as to, oh, I didn't finish that assignment, because they're still little kids. I mean, they're not little, little, but they're still kids. I'd like you to speak a little bit about, if you would, I know that you did a student engagement survey. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, thank you for the reminder. I said, I finished this, I was like, I'm missing something.
Yes.
So, so in March, we ran a student engagement survey. Students met to their homerooms, I, I'm at the beginning, at the beginnings, had answered honestly. It's all, it was all confidential, so the only thing that we got was what grade they were in. And actually, what we found was a lot of students, they enjoy kind of the gamification of classes, they enjoy group work with their friends, the most middle schoolers, right? Almost everyone said field trips, that they like field trips. And that was some good feedback for us to have, right? I can get to the hard numbers of like the overview, but I remember a majority of them did feel like the staff, and it was like seventy percent said at least, at least often, that the staff or my teacher provide support when I need it, right? And we, so we added some of that in there as well. And they liked that hands-on learning. Not as many liked the videos and the, and the technology as I thought. That was a surprising low end of the number. The field trips took the cake, but in the middle school, I think they, yeah, put me on a bus, bring me to a field trip. And they liked that kind of experiential kind of project-based learning, which I know a lot of our teachers do have that kind of re, when they, when they work on their research, so.
Can you send me a summary of the data for the next quarter?
I definitely can.
So I'll put it in the next quarter.
I definitely can.
Thank you.
Listen, you have some questions?
Were, were there, was there any feedback on like, say, that survey that you've been able to like turn around and implement with your team? Was there something like, you're like, okay, we can do better at this and?
So that was actually a lot of my kind of tricks of the trade that I, that I introduced when it comes to universal design, actually were based out of the results of the survey. So we ran that the week that we had PD.
Yeah.
And then staff were given great specific kind of overviews of it. You know, tried to keep it as broad-based as possible, right? And staff also had a chance to review the, the survey questions prior to make sure that it wasn't, that it was a fair survey, right? Obviously, there's going to be biases in it, right? If a kid doesn't like a certain subject, they might then try to, they won't pick any of the activities that are aligned with that subject. We inherently accept that, that bias with, because they're middle schoolers, right? But, yeah, they, they, I've, I've been seeing a lot more of that kind of up and movement than, than I was prior. So I think our staff are, you know, the more, the more engaged that students are, easier the, the easier that they are to teach. I've seen that, right? When I was in my, in my decade of teaching. And so we're hoping, my idea will be that ideally, we'd run one more, hopefully before the end of the sun up, before the end of the school year. If not, we'd run it early in the fall and then we kind of run it almost concurrently with the culture climates. So we're right around that kind of timeline that we run with the staff.
Danielle, did a question.
Can you just talk about the, the fourth to fifth grade transition? I know Natalie's same question, she's here, but just how you're working together to try to make that a move? Get going to the middle school, something like that?
Yes, so, yeah, so one big thing that we're trying to do is, is make sure that, trying to find ways to make sure that the fourth and fifth grade are collaborating. So I know they had it, they have had a Bridges meeting initially of just what do they need to succeed. I know we have the fifth grade celebration coming up, but we're going to invite the fifth grade teachers. I'll be there as well. And then I know that the fifth grade team, one thing that we, that we really want to try to have is some sort of open house for the upcoming, the incoming middle schoolers, right? Where they can start getting, so that they're not getting that culture shock. We can minimize that culture shock when they first step in in September or late August, right? And similar to, we kind of, we're going to try to adopt for a long-term plan, that model of Bridges meetings throughout the year, just as that check-in, right? And it's something I would like to eventually do. And we, I've spoken briefly with team leads about it, I'd do that with sixth to seventh, right? It's an easier transition, but it still is a transition, right? New teachers, new schedule, new expectations. So again, making sure that kids are, you know, there, there's going to be a culture shock. There always is. Kids are going to feel overwhelmed. It's, it's going to happen, right? Just because of the nature of middle school, just as freshmen, right? Our eighth graders are going to go and get the same thing when they hit high school. But the more we, the less we can minimize it, or the more we can minimize, the better for our students.
I, I guess I'm really happy about the things that you're talking about here for looking ahead, the differentiating instruction and.
I think it was a great, the training that Jeff did, it was a great training on, you know, how to support different learners. It was engaging training. He modeled as the presenter lots of the techniques that can be used as a teacher. So I think it was a courageous step into that differentiation.
Great, great.
It's, it's a passion of mine.
So can you tell us a little bit more about like some of the techniques?
Yeah, so, well, so, so it's not necessarily like the techniques, but it was more identifying. So the, the big activity we did is we ident, I gave them little slips with a, a, a learner profile. And then, and then we, we, it was a little bit of scaffolding. So UDL, Universal Design has a framework based on engagement, action, action expression, representation of learning. And so a student who, we would have a student with a learning profile, kind of like what class they might be in or what subject they're facing, or activity they're facing, and how can we remove any barrier? We have to identify barriers that they may incur. So we're trying to be proactive rather than reactive. And, and starting to kind of get the, get the, the brainstorming going of it. So we might have a student, you know, a student who has, I'm trying to remember, like a hard-of-hearing student. And, and they're, they're working on an essay. So how can we improve that? So one way we might do that is making sure, or if he's watching a video, making sure that there are subtitles on that video, right? That is now removing a barrier, helping him identify that barrier. Providing for some students, you know, who, who struggle hearing, some sort of text-to-speech or alternative way from just typing on the computer might be helpful for them. Or providing that extra support for time that a student may need, right? Trying to think if I had any other.
Probably more, probably more important than just even identifying those, because I think that's the easiest part, is actually implementing them. How to remove it.
Yeah, and how to remove it, right? So, and, and that's kind of all that UDL is, is identifying barriers and then trying to strategize ways to remove it, right? And, and what might work for me might not work for you, right? Even though we might face a similar barrier. And so just trying, it's, it's a mind shift, shift, mindset shift. And the cool part is, most, most educators do it already.
Especially experienced.
Yeah, we, we already do it. And so that's kind of the cool thing, is it's not just this brand-new idea that we have to now teach everybody. You're already doing it, we're just going to call it. We're going to have universal language or a common language about what we're doing.
Can I expand on this just a little bit?
Yeah.
I think one more step is I think people do what they feel comfortable with. And then by focusing on it, what you do is you force them to expand into areas that they feel less comfortable with.
Yeah.
So the whole goal here, I think, over time with UDL is that it'll become easier and easier to identify those areas and then easier and easier, or just more experience under their belt, actually taking those barriers out of the way. So, so once again, it's, it really comes down to, it's a lot of face time with our staff, it's a lot of thinking time, processing time, and then most importantly, that follow-up, Jeff, going into those rooms and observing those things in action. And, and really, if you get into that room and you don't see it in action, or you see maybe a limited version of it in action, how do you work with that staff member to say, okay, how could we have expanded that a little bit further? And it really comes down to incremental growth. Again, the whole idea is that we're not going to see everybody overnight become experts at this, but if we're constantly approaching incrementally, everybody's just going to get better and better and better. And as we talked about in our previous meeting, it took fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years to get where we're currently at, right? Go back and look at those scores from eighteen, nineteen, twenty years ago and say, wow, what the heck happened? Well, it took a long time to get here. It's going to take some time to get back out of that. And it's efforts like what you're seeing from these folks that is going to make that happen.
I think the cool thing with UDL is it's where you're not really replacing, you're just adding. It's a, it's, it's, it's teaching, it is identifying a new tool in the tool belt that the teacher has now, right? We're not replacing, we're just going to continue to add, right? Because some students, I had students, I had a group of economics students last year, who I was a big project-based guy, and they just liked lectures and pen and paper tests. That's all that, that's how they learned. And so that's how I taught them, because for that group of students, it worked. And they were the only, so they were the only class that I taught that way, right? But, but, and so it, it's, it's just, it's, it's, it's adding, not removing or replacing. That I think is the key. Because then the feedback is just always in that proactive measure, right? And I think that that's, that's the cool part.
Thinking about that proactive, universal measure, it's about saying, you know, not just what can benefit one kid, but what can we do for all students.
Yes, yes.
Offering them to all students.
Yes, yes.
Because, you know, ultimately, what we're looking for is for them to demonstrate their knowledge and their growth and their particular competency.
Yes.
So, you know, not just saying, well, for this student, we're going to do something because we've identified that need, we're doing it for all.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good, good. Anybody else? Nope. Big smile. All right, thank you, Jeff. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much.
As I said last time, and I'll say it again after Melissa's done, if you think of things that you would like to know more about, and I think we already identified at least two that I wrote down, but share them with us. Don't hesitate to reach out and send an email to me, send an email to Jeff just saying, hey, I'm interested in knowing more about, or could, next time you present. I don't know if Jeff, what we talked about with Natalie was her coming back in June. I'm not sure if Jeff will come back in June as well. I think these are running longer than I think we thought. So one of the things I was talking to them about is maybe every month they come one at a time. So, you know, let's just say for So, you know, let's just say, for example, Natalie's in August, Jeff's in September, and Melissa's in October. So kind of every month, we just have one person come through in one of our two meetings, which would make it so that, like tonight, this is going to go rather long, because now Melissa's about to jump in. So, and I think it also lets you focus, it lets you really say, okay, we've got our K-4, we've got our 5-8, and we've got our special ed. And those are, it's going to let you just really just hone in on that one for that particular month. And each time they come back, my hope is that it just gets stronger and better, and you're getting more information, which you need.
Yep, that's a great idea. Great, thank you so much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have Melissa. And Melissa, do you want to move where you want to stay? Right where we are, what do you want to do? Do you want to come up?
It doesn't matter to me.
Are you going to sit power or are you seated?
Okay, all right, so where are you?
All right, there you go.
All right.
What would you like to do? No, you, you can come here if you want, or you can go wherever you want.
Okay. All right, I hope I'm hitting the targets of what you're looking for. My understanding is you were looking kind of, for the broad strokes of what is special ed, what kind of supports can we provide for those students that, you know, kind of correlate to the pieces that you guys might be facing with budget, things like that. So, how do I move them then? It's like. So, sorry. So we often talk about it's the law, so I wanted to kind of get a little bit into what the law is. So the federal law is called Individual with Disability Education Act, IDEA. Sometimes it's referred to as IDEA, sometimes you'll hear that language. So it was originally signed into law in nineteen seventy-five. It was renamed to IDEA in nineteen ninety, reauthorized in nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and four. So it is a law that has spent many decades and has been revisited over time and altered in some minor ways, or some, I should say, altered in some ways. It's a law that makes available what we call free and appropriate public education to eligible students with disabilities throughout the nation, and ensures that they receive special education and related services to these students.
So you'll hear us say "FAP", that's what she's talking about, when you hear that word.
Free and appropriate public education is a FAP language. You might have heard me or other people say. Next slide, perfect, thank you. So in New, so that's the federal law. Each state does it slightly different. In New Hampshire, it's a rule, it's the RSA 186C, and it's aligned to IDEA. So for instance, in New Hampshire, we have to complete evaluations within a sixty-day timeframe. In another state, it might be a forty-five or seventy-five. Like, there's some flexibility. The federal law says in a timely manner, I think is the exact language. So each state is slightly different. In Massachusetts, they have different educational disability categories than New Hampshire does. So there's some flexibility. And so it's meant to dovetail and work together. So the next slide, and if you could link up, if you could hit that hyperlink. Perfect. So this is a slide that I think can be helpful, something. So this is from the Parent Information Center. So it's our responsibility as a district to have, if we suspect a student has a disability to make a referral, to evaluate, to determine if they're eligible. If they're eligible, to create what we call an individual education plan, IEP, determine placement, and then monitor, probably doing the right things for students. And these last three pieces are happen handling. So every year, we go back to develop the IEP and discuss placement and make sure we're doing what we need to do for the student. So that's kind of like the big picture of the special ed process. And so we have, that first piece is called Child Find, so we have an obligation to actually go aid, go out and find students who may qualify for special ed, who have that potential. So we have to suspect a disability that requires specially-designed instruction. So instruction is above and beyond the core instruction necessary because of that disability. Important to note that this Child Find obligation applies to students who are homeschooled and placed in private special schools, private schools by their parents. So we have an obligation to still identify those students. We don't have an obligation to provide an IEP placement, right? We don't have an obligation to provide services for a homeschooled student. We don't have an obligation to provide special students who say, I don't even know, there used to be a Catholic school in Rochester, I wonder if it still exists.
It doesn't.
But like, if we had a student who went there, we don't have, the Stratford School District doesn't have a responsibility to provide services to that student. But we still have an obligation to identify the students. And then a student with a disability would be a student who is within the ages of three to twenty-one until their twenty-second birthday, so inclusively, that was a recent change. And in the state of New Hampshire, they have to fit under one of these fourteen categories that looks like you had a questionnaire.
I do, and if you're not, if you're going to get to it later, that's fine. But where does, where does the IEP and the 504 differentiate? Because I'm seeing some behavior-type stuff in here.
Yeah, so I didn't put a slide up for that, but I can speak to that. So this is solely on special ed, and so in special ed, we have these fourteen categories, right? And so you have to be a student within those age ranges. You have to fit into one of those, you have to have a disability that fits into one of those categories, and requires that specially-designed instruction in order to have FAP, right? So you might have, you might be on the spectrum, and you might have some struggles with social communication, but you are unpassing grades, you are demonstrating competencies, you are accessing small-group work, right? But maybe you need to have, to know what the daily schedule is going to be, so you can anticipate that schedule and not be frustrated by that shift. So some students with autism have a kind of inflexibility, right? So that might be where a 504 comes into place. They don't need specially-designed instruction for a disability, but they might need reasonable accommodations. And so knowing the schedule would be a reasonable accommodation.
Okay.
Yep, so that's really the big difference between, section 504 is looking to level the playing field. It's not looking to provide additional instruction and where to get the FAP.
Okay.
If that helps.
It does.
Okay. Thank you. Let me move on. Thank you. So the IEP is, as I said before, it's an annual plan, and it looks at the unique needs of that student. So that's that I part, the individualized. It's a reflection of the specially-designed instruction that's above and beyond the core instruction in any Title I instruction. It includes elements such as present levels, special factors, these are state ones that they want us to look at to rule out things like limited English proficiency, visually impaired, things like that. So there's some rule-ups there. Transition planning, if you're over fourteen, goals, services, accommodations, and modifications, both for, in all district, state, and classroom. It looks like, Kylie, you might have a question?
Nope, just a quick one.
Yeah.
A lot of people also wonder what's the difference between an accommodation and a modification.
I'm stuck to that.
It's like, oh, you do, never mind, I was going to say something.
I do.
Coming soon to a theater meeting, because it's a very common, even amongst educators, it's a very common misunderstanding.
Yeah. So basically, the plan says, okay, this is where the student is at, this is where we want them to be in a year, and what kind of services do they need to accomplish that? And it is one of the very few things in special ed in the state of New Hampshire that the state has given us a format for. So we use their software for all the, like, all the forms and things like that are usually created by the different law firms. They are not state forms.
Can I ask a question with that aspect?
Yeah, so you mentioned Title I separately.
Yep. Are there students that have Title I services that don't necessarily fall under having an IEP then?
Yes, absolutely. So Title I is still considered regular education, and so there are absolutely students who receive Title I services.
And is that something based on population? What determines how much?
Yeah, there's a, there's a formula, Title I formula has a lot to do with your free and reduced lunch population. And so there's a formula that they use in order to, the state uses in order to give us a grant, a federal grant. And from that, we create, there's an annual plan that I have to submit to the state before they'll approve the grant. And we have to determine what our qualifications are going to be. And then you have like a REK you order, and then you figure out how many students you can meet the needs of, given the amount of funding you have. So if you have a high enough population of free and reduced students, then you're either school-wide or district-wide Title I, and then you don't have to differentiate, it's just universally applied. But we do not. And so we are what they call a targeted school. We target the international.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So again, especially special services are unique and specially-designed. They're above and beyond the core curriculum. They are the things that, things students need in order to access the regular curriculum. So if we, you know, we have a student who isn't at the same reading level, say, we were kind of, we're working on raising that reading level so they can access the things in their regular classroom. We have two methods primarily doing this, what we call push-in services, when we go into the classroom, provide the support, or pull-out services, in which the student is at the classroom to provide that support. This is a little easy, but I put this in because you seem to have questions about this, either at town meetings or when you're looking at invoices. So I just wanted to spend a little bit more time talking about related services. Eric, I think you had a question?
No, 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 yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about the pull-in services. So are we allowed to have our special ed, either parents or case managers, when they're working in the classroom, work in a small group with other students within the classroom with their identified student, who may be working, need to work at the same skills? We used to do this, so that's why I'm wondering if we're allowed to do it.
So I want to make sure I understand, you're talking about having a special ed services and an IEP.
Right.
Provided in the classroom, not only for the special ed students, but for regular ed students who might fit into that circle, or that group, is that what you're asking?
Yes, and say you would pull, what we used to do is pull out kids that maybe needed the same skill.
Yeah.
As the identified student, who the parent or the case manager can use to work with.
Yeah.
At a small group, and sort of do instruction to their main student, but have the whole, the whole little group there, because you are sort of.
So it's a, so first, I'll say that paraprofessionals cannot be the primary instructors. That has been exceptionally clear.
Right.
That wasn't always the case. That has been very clear now. So they can certainly reinforce an instruction that has already been known, or they can in some cases have the plans from a certified teacher. But having the mixed groups presents some challenges. One, you could be seen as providing special ed services for regular ed students without parent consent. So there's like, there's a very clear transparency that would need to happen. And then if they're working on the same skill, you need to be making sure that 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 student shouldn't be a referral to special ed, if that makes sense. So you really, I feel like it's a case by definition. So I don't feel like it's a hard no, but the largest concern is that we cannot provide special ed services without parent consent. And so you, if you have identified it for the purposes of supporting a special ed kid, having a regular ed student in there could be very easily a denial of a parent right to notification of special education.
We used to do it.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so I, you know, I feel like there's a subtlety to some situations that are maybe more nuanced with clear, you know, clear expectations to families and transparency, but overall, I would say no.
And once again, that's a special education paraprofessional. Can you have paraprofessionals that are not special education support teachers as directed by the teacher? The answer is yes, because they're not providing special ed services, they're providing regular services as directed by the classroom teacher. But once again, I think the concern here is that we have to nuance this a little bit, right? We do have general education, regular education, paraprofessionals in our building, and we do have special education paraprofessionals, and so just want to be cautious there.
Yeah, and so I guess maybe, I'm thinking about this, because I know a little about your background, W, years. So there is definitely a place for a regular ed teacher to be providing core instruction to special ed students and regular ed students together. That absolutely can and should be happening. So, and there is definitely a place for a timeline which, you know, the classroom teacher might have given a specific directive, and a paraprofessional might be reinforcing that while the regular ed teacher is supporting a smaller group that is special ed and regular ed students. So that is absolutely can happen.
That's what I'm trying to.
But not for special ed teachers to pull into a group, regular ed students, and not have that notification to parents like that. That's, I guess, more what I was talking about, so. I don't know if that's, there is.
No, it is.
It is. Okay. So, so related services are services that are developmental correct or corrective or otherwise supportive for that student to benefit from special ed. They are not by definition special ed itself, but they are related to and supportive. And so some common ones are speech and language. And so we very often think of this as articulation, so students who have a speech impairment in some way. But it is also for the language part, so for receptive language, for our ability to receive and understand language, and expressive language, our ability to express that language back out. As well as what we call social pragmatics, so the ability to use language to understand social situations and throughout life. So it's, it looks at all those components. Occupational therapy looks at the everyday activities of students, and some examples are like the fine motor tasks for handwriting, and the visual motor skills to be able to copy from the board. And these are not exhaustive, these are just kind of a sampling to give you an idea. Self-care, so being able to, you know, take off and apply your clothing for winter recess, or to navigate the lunchroom, to hold trays, to be able to open jars, you know, practicing your food, as well as what we call sensory diet. So it's just kind of a fancy way of saying, we create a plan that looks at how to regulate your sensory needs, and being able to create that plan and help monitor it and intervene as necessary and teach skills related to it. So physical therapy is when we look at those activities motor-wise that interfere with our students' participation. I think that's a good slide there. And so very typical things are students' ability to walk through the hallway, to navigate, physically navigate their classroom, be able to use their motor skills in order to be able to sit properly in a chair. And, you know, that's important to have the endurance to be able to do all the class activities that are part of that. Thank you. So you've probably seen on different invoices, a DCBA, board-certified behavior analyst. So that is someone who provides expertise and behavior analysis, or what they call EBA, to complete functional behavioral assessments. So what is the function of the behavior, what is causing the behavior? Development, developing and supporting in the implementation of behavior plans, developing and supporting instructional methodologies such as discrete trial training, which is something in particular that we use for students on the spectrum.
Special ed is classic for alphabet soup, just everything's got an abbreviation.
I tried to use both, so that if, you know, if you're used to the abbreviation, you might know what it means and so forth. So we also have educational audiologists or teachers of the deaf, they're two different things, but there is a relationship there. And they support and provide instruction and/or provide equipment recommendations related to students with hearing disabilities or balance disorders. Most commonly, we see this for students who have auditory processing disorders. So that is not a hearing disability, it's that the brain's interpretation of what they're hearing makes it challenging for them. Music therapy, this is to support communication, social skills, behavior, and mental health. So we often see this with students where you might have students working on reading, right? So they might create a greeting song to help reinforce that skill. Another one is reciprocal communication. So some students are working on the ability to share something and then have someone else share something, and kind of have that reciprocal back and forth, right? So sometimes music is a great way of helping support students in doing that. Are you still with me?
Mm-hmm.
You've talked a lot. Okay. Recreational therapy. This is to improve the physical, cognitive, and social emotional well-being through recreational activities. So we see this sometimes as adaptive B. We also, they'll also do like physical games and activities. And they kind of allow it purposely to fail sometimes so that students learn skills so that they can problem solve. So, you know, if it causes a peer conflict, then they can work on resolving that peer conflict with the goal of being able to transfer those skills back into the classroom, into that setting. Transportation. This may seem obvious, but I think there are some subtleties to this, which is that if we don't already have regular ed transportation, buses running to and from school, then we've got an obligation to provide it. So when we think about preschool, for those students where preschool is part of an IEP, we don't run a bus to preschool. We don't run a universal bus. So we provide a special ed bus for those students to be able to access their services. We also have students who need the bus for adaptive reasons, such as lip ramps, seat belts, harnesses, things like that. Paraprofessionals, we've talked about them. So some examples of equipment that we sometimes use are Rifton is the brand, but a chair. So a student might need a particularly supported chair because, again, they don't have that same muscle strength from their core. So in order to be able to sit at the cafeteria table or be able to sit at the table in first grade, what have you, they need to be able to have that strength without flopping over. Even at circle time, things like that. Sound field system. So that's just a system that amplifies the sound throughout the classroom. Magnifying devices. And that doesn't mean like global magnifier, like they're super high-tech, sorry to say, Eric, where you like slide under and you, you know, work sheet under and it makes, magnifies it all, scans it into a computer that's on a larger screen, things like that. So larger screen, larger keyboard. This is a technology device. So we have some students who use a device to communicate. Here we go. So accommodations are supports for any skill, although only the one you're targeting. So if you remember back to when you took your driver's ed exam, some of us were wearing glasses at that point. They weren't changing the actual exam for driver's ed. We just had glasses so that we could be able to see it. They weren't targeting our ability to see. They were targeting our ability to be able to drive safely. And so glasses were fine to be able to do that. However, if a student was or a person was using their glasses when they were doing an acuity exam, that is a modification because you're actually using that to support the very still target. So if we translate that a little bit to some of the academic tasks, if we're talking about reading fluency, like the speed at which you can read, then having it not be timed would be a modification, right? Or as if we were doing something where we wanted a student to read a passage and be able to answer comprehension questions, extra time is not a modification. So it really depends on what you're targeting. I don't know if that helps or if you want to add to that.
I think the most, I think the most common problem is that any sort of change, you'll hear people say, oh, we did a modification. And it's just a misunderstanding that that word is really important. If you're accommodating, they're, they're still on the same page as everybody else. If you're modifying, then they're not. They're on a different page. And I think the biggest thing was like in high school, when I was there, if a person was being accommodated, then they were still on track for that graduation with a normal diploma. If they're being modified, then there was going to be some sort of differentiated type of way of finishing their high school program. And so I think it's just important for everybody to realize that there is a difference between those two things. There's nothing wrong with either. It's just the level of the change that's happening. It's important that people realize. So we encourage our staff to never say that we're modify, say that you're making accommodations, you're accommodating their needs, unless they've clearly been told, no, this is an actual modification. Because accommodations are just the lesser of the elements.
And I think about, you know, Rob, you shared that some of the, some of the new work classroom teacher, some students that require particular accommodations, you just universally provided those accommodations. And so that kind of gets back to that UDL and saying that we just want to meet all students where they're at.
Yeah, really, it was, when I first started in education, I thought, you know, it was rigidity to education. What I learned over time, especially in those first couple of years working with a special educator who was very knowledgeable and supportive of me, was that what was good for one was good for all. And so it really allowed me to realize that this rigidity that was being instructed towards me by other educators that had been in the system for a long time wasn't something I had to get trapped in as well. You know, when it came to extra time on a test, I think, why do I care when you finish the test as long as you finish the test? You know, preferential seating can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. And so the kids are like, well, you know, I think I'd be better over here. Why can't they move? So it was a lot of these types of things that were just simple accommodations. And I just found it to be so much better. You know, I used to have to do, had to do guided notes for certain students. I had to create these notes that were much more simplified, if you will. But then I started thinking about it. Why did they have to write every word on a board or every word on a slide? Why can't they maybe just be highlighting or underlining key words and notes that I've handed out? So these were all things that just became accommodations that I felt were good for everybody.
Teaching.
Yes. So extended school year services, we often talk about this as ESY, extended school year. But it actually can be a longer day, a longer week, or a longer year. It's just more often than not, it's seen as a longer year because we have a summer break, the longer break we have. And so it has to be, not all students who have an IEP require an extended school year over the summer. It has to be necessary for their free and private public education. It's to avoid severe regression. There is an expectation or an understanding that every student will have some level of regression over the summer. And, you know, it's your responsibility as a classroom teacher to kind of get them back up. But this is talking about students who, without the summer program, wouldn't benefit from their rest of the, kind of like rest of the year of their program. It has to be, that's okay. I know this stuff by heart. It can also be for students who have integrative behaviors or if they have emerging skills. So you classically see this, you know, in like the first grade range where they're kind of on the cusp of mastering reading. And another two weeks or so is going to get them there where if they, you know, they went 10 weeks without it, they'd really have to be going backwards and picking adapt. And each year, reading expectations get higher. Placement. So Stratford School and Co Brown are what we consider our neighborhood school. So the law requires that unless it's a particular unique need for that student, then they should be educated in the same school they would if they didn't have a disability or didn't have an IEP. And so we have, the state creates this continuum placement, which is actually different for preschool students versus school-age students. And so the expectation is that we're starting at the regular education classroom, then we're going to resource room, then we're going to self-contained, a separate special ed program, residential placement, full instruction for a hospital. And for preschool, it's the early childhood program, which some of you were here a few years ago when I suggested we kind of switch our model to have two different programs. One would be the early childhood program and then the other being the early childhood special ed program. So we can provide at least two, well, really three, the service provider location. We have some students that come in just for speech services or just for OT services. So we could provide more of the continuum, therefore needing less to be able to access an outside program.
So I'm seeing on there age 22. On a previous slide, I saw age 21. I think it would, is 22 the age now?
It's 21 inclusive. So on their 22nd birthday, it is.
Okay. And I think that's an important distinction for people to know that the district owes this responsibility by law to people until they reach that age. You know, we're an elementary school here, but those services could carry up through age 22.
And the, unless they earn their standard diploma first. So some, most students will earn their standard diploma somewhere between 17 and 19, and then special ed services end.
So Melissa, before we had our in-house preschool, we used to provide, say, speech and language therapy to preschoolers if they were in local preschools. We would actually provide services. Do we still do that?
We do, but very rarely. Very rarely, because we can offer the programs here.
Is that clear to Eric and everybody else? I just, I'm assuming somebody at home might be like, what are they talking about? So it used to be on the 21st birthday, we stopped services. Now it's on the 22nd birthday. So 21 inclusive means for all 365 days of that 21st year. Where before it was on day one of their 21st year, it stops. So just, that's the difference. And so you could say it one of two ways. You could say ages 6 to 21 inclusive, or you could say ages 6 to 22, you mean the same fact.
Yeah.
But I made it so the language was consistent.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to pick it apart.
No, no, I think it's important. It's important because I think that's a real, that's a recent change that I think has caused a lot of people to be like, wait a minute. So it's a good question and it's good for people at home that maybe doesn't know that.
I don't know if you can see the slides.
Oh, we're still saying no. I did post Jeff's one pager on. I did not have time to do both at the same time, but I'll get this on there as well. People will look at it.
So, you know, we talk a lot about the jargon and the laws and the procedure. But I think it's important to remember they, you know, special ed students are still all our students. They're not like a separate class. And so students with IEPs are regular ed students first. They bring curiosity, creativity, and a desire to learn, just like any other student. They have personalities, interests, friends, preferences, just like any other student. And while they may need specialized supporters or friendships for learning, they still share the same fundamental characteristics that define all learners. So the ability to grow, the capacity to contribute, and the right to be included.
Two middle kids are freaking you out with no mouths. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I can see why, now that you say that.
Oh, wow, wow.
I'm sorry, you need a mouth, man. This is strange.
Does anybody have any other questions from Melissa? Good?
Oh, we still have, oh, you still have, I'm sorry.
I don't have to. No, I don't have to.
Definitely.
No, keep going. I'm sorry, I thought that was the conclusion.
But once again, it has been going a while. Is this a desire for her to come back and do a part two? I mean, because I just, you can see.
I kind of did like a case study of different students across the different continuum of services. So I can definitely talk about them, or I could come back to part two, or I could hold it for next year.
So are there three more slides?
No, I think that's it.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Why don't we just get those printed in our email? And we could read them. Unless people want to, do you want to go through the rest of the six? I think we're getting tired. What? I think if you want to just email those, if you're explaining different students.
Yeah, I think it may be helpful for me to go over, but I don't think I need to do it now. So maybe a part two or a next year.
Okay. What do you want to do? Part two, or just?
I think you put the.
Doesn't need to be now.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't need to be now.
No.
I feel like let's, let's put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Well, not the next one, the one after the next one. Next was a Co Brown, so. We'll put it on the one after for the end of May, so that's makes sense.
Go back.
No, no, it's fair.
I mean, I love that here.
Yeah, I'm talking a lot.
All right. Good. Thank you so much. Sometimes it's helpful when questions come up.
Yes, that was very good.
There's a lot of good information.
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you very much.
Other than those slides that are already created, are there other pieces of information you think it would be helpful for me to come back and share with you guys?
I think we can give them some time to get that.
Yeah.
That was a lot.
So no, it's been true with each of the presentations. It's like, hey, as you think about things, you're driving home tomorrow.
Just a big picture thing that I have is how the funding plays into that, like how different things are eligible for different funding for grants and stuff. So we receive, if we separate out COVID money.
Yep.
We receive an annual entitlement grant for special ed students. In addition, we have, I think, I'm pretty sure I came and talked about the special ed funding as well. So that special ed aid for exceptional costs. So aside from that, I can't think of any special ed funding source we have besides what you, what's in the budget and what you, tax payers pay.
So you're talking about the IDPA grant, which is based on a formula.
Correct.
That that would be interesting information. If they'll give you the formula, I had to, you don't know how hard it is to get that.
I do know, because we've had these conversations.
Yes. But you can, they calculate if I get foreign things to figure out how much money you're going to get. Because the reason I'm very interested in this because at one point, all of Stratford's money was put together with Northwood and Nottingham. So it was like, well, how much is actually our funding for our students? And it was very hard to tease that out and figure out how much was actually ours.
And I think in addition, in a short period of time, they didn't count the Co Brown students as Stratford students, even if we were paying tuition for them.
They were paying for Northwood.
Because they were, because Co Brown is in the town of Northwood. They counted it towards Northwood's. And so they, I think there was quite a lot of frustration with that.
They changed that. And they changed and reverted.
Yeah.
That was, that was a big problem.
Yeah.
Because they were using our money to offset costs for other students that were not Stratford students.
In fairness to the state, they had an expectation that whatever town, because it wasn't particular to Co Brown and Northwood. It was the fact that the.
Whatever the town, the school was located.
It was like, it only affected a couple of towns, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
It just happened to be us.
Right. But they did change that.
Yeah. And so there was an expectation that the town in which the school was located would be providing extra funding for that special ed kid, for those special ed kids. But naturally, if it's in your pool, you would use it the way you see fit for your special ed students.
Right. Right. Because they were taking that money and they were paying a pro cara to teach a skills course that we had no children in. And that was the problem because none of our students were benefiting from our high school special ed money. It was not benefiting any of our special ed students at the time.
And I think we did have students who then did go into the program. But again, I think the argument that could be made is the amount of money that Northwood was receiving did not offset, did not equal the cost of the parent to teach that class, let alone the proration of special ed. It was Stratford students in that class.
Absolutely, absolutely. There were very few, if any, Stratford students. Yeah, we were paying for it with our funds. Just like our preschool. And this is what we have our own.
But to be clear, it wasn't, this is not a slam against Co Brown or Northwood. This was the structure that the state created.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but we did, that was reversed.
Yeah.
The presentation's now on the website. It's available for access at all places. I'll make sure it gets into the board packet page so that if they go to the board packet any time in the future, they will see those two presentations. They'll be saved as PDFs so they can see them.
So with the next one, if you want to do the IDA grant as well, fund, and if you can get the formula?
I feel like I've done this before, but I will do it.
But everybody needs to see it. I think I have it somewhere too.
Different board.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
It's just fun to figure it out, because you've been, to make sure that we're getting the amount that we're supposed to. Okay, all right, thank you. Next, Agenda Review. Okay, anybody have anything we need to change?
Just got a bunch of others.
To the others, okay. All righty, so next, um, approval of school board minutes, April 9th.
So I put into your packet a set of minutes. April identified after I had left town that something was wrong, because that's why you got a separate set of minutes. I hope that was clear to you. So the minutes that were in a separate stapled item, those are the ones that hopefully you're looking at. Those are the ones that are online now. If you did, and she sees, like, if you're, if you're talking about something, she's like, yeah, that's fixed, she can clarify for you as you go.
This is the one where it's supposed to be looking at?
They were, they were in a separate, yeah, it was in your packet, but it was a separate set.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion for the, um, school board minutes for April 9th? Anyone? Can anyone?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve these school board minutes from April 9th.
Okay, public and non-public?
Public and non-public.
Do you have a second? I'll click it. Ready, and Katrina? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Wow, we're really just moving through this.
We're going, okay.
Oh, boy.
Oh, dear.
Do you want April to point out what the significant change was?
Sure, sure.
April, do you know?
Well, I don't have.
Oh, you don't have it? Don't worry about it.
I've, I've got the corrected version. Received there.
We'll see if I had any.
I had, I did have notes here. I do know one thing is the, uh, the Co-Brown student to play spring sports.
Yes.
Somehow or another, we're in this one as well, so I know we, we discussed removing the extra one from the previous.
Okay.
That was it.
Let me just see.
I have to compare, my thing is marked, but.
Line 146, where I made the motion to accept the Dover High School assignment request. Should, should that include the number of students that it was for? And specifically that we don't, that transportation is up to the parents?
Yes, that's what Eric always says, yep.
Do you have that in?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, great, you did fix that. No, I see what it was.
I said, did I say that just?
No, you didn't.
Okay, and tuition up to the rate of Co-Brown.
Yeah.
You always say that. You say tuition up to the rate of Co-Brown, and then transportation provided by the parents.
And you did correct, I would, I had, you had that thing about the volunteer services, and you changed it to tradesmen and vendors. In volunteer, is it just a volunteer that we wanted the tradesmen and?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't specifically for volunteers. It was vendors.
People that were interested in supporting the districts.
So the tab that's on there and what went out in the community calendar talks about vendors slash trade people, um, that were looking to increase.
Okay, so then on line, the corrected one, line 103, we would just slash the word volunteer? Interested in providing services?
Providing services to the. Vendors interested in providing services, yes, providing.
All right, let me just see. Did anybody else see anything? Would be good. Great, bye. Morning, yes, you're good. All right, Katrina?
Yeah.
And Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Thank you, April. Very nice.
Melissa, you're more than welcome to leave. You're ready.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can leave.
That's always, that's always open-ended.
Yes, it's up to you. If you want to stay, you can, but if you want to leave.
I probably won't stay for all of them.
Yeah.
I can stay a little longer.
Okay.
It actually might be good for her to stay, just in case anybody has any questions about the ESY. That's coming up very soon here. Manifest, were there any questions that were public? We had the one.
There were a couple, I've got it now, but there were a couple.
I'm actually looking at the last one, so you can have.
No, I don't need it back. Just there were a couple invoices that, understanding that we froze the budget, I don't know if they should have been, just general supply stuff.
So it could have been before the 14th, so I didn't make the announcement to everybody until a couple of days after the last board meeting. So the meeting happened, and I just didn't get to it. And so it was on Monday, the 14th, I think, is when I announced it to everybody.
And that's what the date was on those invoices.
Hopefully, we're not buying anything we don't need to buy anymore. Well, it's, I'm going to say, going to change that. We're always buying what we need. The stuff that we can live without might be the better way of saying. We can live without it for right now, and we'll get to it later on. Now, people out there going, what? They're buying what?
All right, so you have resignations, and we have retirees, so how do you want to do this, and we have other students?
So I have a resignation for Karen Libby, effective the last day of this year, June 30th. Um, I definitely want us to say thank you, Karen. She's just been a mainstay of this district for a long time. I think she was in there 25 years. So she's been here for a long time. She's done such amazing work with our students, and we're sad, sad, sad to see her heading out.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Yep, I move we accept the retirement of Karen Libby from the position of paraprofessional, thank her for her many years of service.
Okay, and we have a second, if I can, discussion. All right, well, we thank Karen, and we hope that she will be able to maybe join us part-time with her retirement, if she likes.
Never know.
Anyway, we'll see how that goes. All right. Anybody else? All right, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay.
And next, I have got an ESY list here. So ESY, as you've already learned, is the extended school year. Uh, these are folks that are going to be helping out during the summer months to make sure that students get those services that are going to help make sure that they don't lose ground and maybe even continue moving forward. So you can see on here a list of paraprofessionals, Cesar Mulligan, Paula Martel, Andrea Lowry, Donna Collins, Kate Dolan, and Savannah Ridley, all of them at $25 an hour, 16 days for three hours, um, a day. And then the teachers, right now we have one, Cindy Turkington, uh, 3.25 hours per day for 16 days at a rate of $40 an hour.
Okay, do we have date check?
Yes, it's, uh, June, I'm sorry, July 7th through? 30, 31st.
July 7th through the 31st.
There you go.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the nomination, nominations?
Uh, I'll just ask one quick question first. Is this the anticipated need for the entire program?
Yeah.
No, this is the partial list.
This is what we have, so practice is not even close.
We posted, this is one of the positions that we posted online and sent out through our communications. We need more ESY folks.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I move we accept nominations. Presented for paraprofessionals and teacher for the ESY program. Cesar Mulligan, Paula Martel, Andrea Lowry, Donna Collins, Kate Dolan, and Savannah Ridley. As paras for 16 days, three hours a day, at a rate of $25 per hour. And Cindy Turkington for Special Ed teacher. For 16 days, 3.25 hours a day, at a rate of $40 per hour.
Okay, do we have a second? I have a second. Discussion? Okay. Katrina? Yeah, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
You also?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, no, I wasn't sure if it was a question.
You said you needed people. I remember you needed people.
Uh, next is a paraprofessional full-time. As I've said in the past, we still have several more openings. We're working as hard as we can. I can't thank Melissa and Marissa and April enough for the constant stream of interviewing that happens over there. Uh, but we finally have one, Samuel Castles. Coming very highly recommended by the group. They really enjoyed the interview process, um, good references, et cetera. Uh, he will be coming to us with a BA, BS degree, um, at step 2.2. Full-time, so that's seven hours a day, 35 hours a week, uh, for 100, and technically it's 82, but it's prorated, so. Uh, let's see here. He has all the benefits, uh, per the CBA, and he'll be, an hourly rate of $17.62 an hour for the rate manager this year. He'll have to have another contract that comes forward to a future board meeting for next year, but this is taken care of between now and the end of the year.
This one has to be signed.
Yes, you will sign this, and then he'll be called in to sign as well.
Okay, good motion.
I move we accept the nomination of Samuel Castles for the position of full-time paraprofessional. Effective date of May 5th, 2025. Benefits per the CBA at a rate of $17.62 per hour from the local operating budget.
Do we have a second? I have a second. Discussion? Okay, all right, Katrina? Yeah, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
Next, we are looking into next year. We had a couple of positions that have already opened up. One of those was a special education teacher case manager. Today's the 23rd, yes. Um, we had a number of candidates, um, and once again, the team has been working diligently. And, uh, they've decided that they'd like to move forward. Patrick Helm, now Patrick's probably a familiar name for many of you. He works in our district already as a paraprofessional. He has completed his degree. He has a statement of eligibility and will be, uh, able to get an intern license, uh, which is one of the types of licenses you can get from the state. And he would then have three years to, uh, complete his intern license to get his beginning educator license. This is a very common process, particularly with Special Ed. They do not have emergency authorizations in Special Ed. So this is actually, um, a step above that. Uh, so just making sure everybody understands kind of where we're headed with this. The team really appreciates him. His work here has been phenomenal. He has been a paraprofessional and has really just learned so much. He had, actually already started working on his plan, even though he can't actually technically start working on it until he's hired. Uh, so once you folks approve, if you approve, we can work with him to get a plan in place and to get that three-year ball rolling. Um, it would come from the local operating budget. It would be the benefits per the CBA. And once again, that's 188 days, eight hours a day, 40 hours a week. He will be coming in as a step one, and this is for the following school year, so the 25, 26 school year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move we accept the nomination of Patrick Helm for the position of Special Ed teacher slash case manager for the 25.6 school year. Step one, a rate of $47,446 from a local operating budget, benefits for the CBA.
Okay, do we have a second? I have a second. Great, discussion. So I think, um, I did ask this question to Rob earlier, here in non-public. Melissa, since Patrick is coming to us with an elementary ed certification, you will be mentoring and supervising him?
Um, I will absolutely be supervising him, and I will be mentoring as I would for any person. Um, but, um, Natalie, um, is actually willing to get her New Hampshire Special Ed certification so that she could be his formal mentor. Um, that, that's the depth of.
Know that part.
The depth of, um, you know, how we feel about him as a candidate. So she, you know, she's certified in Maine, but in order to be the official mentor on the Statement of Eligibility Plan, you have to be certified in, in New Hampshire. Um, so that's the current plan that, um, we're working on, so.
So she would review IEP plans and such with him?
So she would do the, um, uh, like the extra mentoring on top of what he would get from me. So she wouldn't necessarily be reviewing IEP plans, but she might, um, he might come in with a particular IEP that he wants, some particular guidance on. But the Statement of Eligibility, well, the Statement of Eligibility allows you to create the plan. And the plan looks at all the competencies necessary to be a Special Ed teacher. And that mentor is helping supervise and make recommendations for how are you going to meet those competencies? Which classes, um, which on-the-job training, which workshops, combinations of which will create, um, uh, the plan that makes you certified.
Okay, so he will have guidelines to follow, like this needs to be completed by day, year one, this is by year two.
And you're, okay, great. Um, and important to note, oh, sorry, Melissa, that in order to get a Statement of Eligibility in New Hampshire, you have to have completed, um, certain coursework that related to Special Ed. She has met the criteria for. You also have to complete, um, some of the standardized testing to be an educator, and you have to, um, pass it in certain areas, Special Ed being one of them. Um, basic, what do they call it, basic concepts or basic skills. Um, so he's done all of those steps to even get the Statement of Eligibility. And he started working on the pieces that he would then be able to add to his plan, um, once we hire him.
So that was the part that I didn't realize Natalie was going to be his beginning of plan or his intern license. So recognize that there are going to be a variety of resources available to him. He will, by contract, have a mentor within our building, a fellow educator, who will be his mentor. Let's just, you know, it could be Cindy Turkington, it could be somebody else. So there'll be a mentor for him by contract. He then will have the mentorship from the Special Ed Director and making sure that all that stuff. So those are those kind of checklist items, like, hey, you're in a, you're going into an IEP meeting, are you meeting all those requirements? Is the meeting being well-run? Did you check off all the boxes? The beginning of plan or the intern license from the state of New Hampshire, they require you to have somebody who is already certified in your area. Who has a certain number of years of experience in your area, mentor you through the certification process. So that's what Natalie, and that's, that's really interesting, because we would have had to reach outside our school district to get this. We only have one person that meets it, and she couldn't be both. She wouldn't be able to be his in-house mentor and the beginning of plan mentor. So once again, Natalie doing it is going to be wonderful that she can do that.
We do have other, other staff who can do it, but it is wonderful that Natalie wants to. I think that speaks to her level of commitment.
They have to be three years in our district. I'm not sure we have.
Well, you have me.
No, that's what I'm saying. You could have, but it's better that you're not, because you're the administrator, so.
So you're, you're, I guess you're right.
I think really I have one, I have one that checks that box.
We have two that are in the experience certification, but haven't been here for years.
Correct.
So you are 100% correct.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that gets really complicated. So, and this is so good that Natalie would be willing to do this.
She's wonderful. Okay.
I should say that's the correct plan.
Okay.
And I want to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All right, welcome, Patrick.
And that concludes my resignations in New Hampshire. So we do have a math person that is very intrigued, but at the same time, it wasn't wrapped up in time for tonight's meeting, so. Our focus will bring another one to you next week.
Is that still, like, uh, open?
So we thought it was a done deal, so we took the posting down, but I've already talked to April, and tomorrow we'll put the posting back up.
Because I saw the recent blast that kind of went out, and I noticed it wasn't on there, so I was very excited.
Yeah.
But, uh.
But today, it became clear to us that we are one of a couple options. And as a result of that, they were not willing to sign the dotted line. So once again, we will repost. We had no other candidates, so we're fine there, but, you know, somebody else might emerge, hopefully, if this person doesn't, so continuing to move forward on that.
Can we just move to the students, uh, the placements that we don't forget?
I was going to do it on the.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't forget.
Do you need me to say anything, or is just Eric going to make motions?
Eric?
I can just make the motion.
You can make the motion.
I'm going, I'm going to do three separate motions.
Okay.
So I move we approve the student placement as presented in non-public. For three students to attend Dover High School next year at a tuition rate up to what we pay to Co-Brown, with transportation to be provided by the parents.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, I just want to clarify, one student is, is the one student currently in 11th grade or going into 11th grade?
They are going into 11th, 12th, and 9th, are the three students.
Okay, I just wanted to do that. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? No, all righty. All right, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
And Kyle?
Yes.
Debbie, yes. All righty.
Uh, I got two more.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, so I move we approve a student placement as presented in non-public for, um, to go to Spaulding High School next year. And they, that will be at a rate up to what we pay to Co-Brown for tuition and transportation to be provided for by the parents.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, okay, discussion.
Yeah, it looks like that's a 10th grade student next year.
Okay, so this is, is this student still currently in?
They're in 9th grade at Spaulding High School. They're going into 10th.
Okay, so they're continuing.
Correct.
Okay. All righty, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay, next, Eric.
And, um, I move that we approve the student placement as discussed in non-public. For the student to attend Pittsfield Middle High School for the 25, 26 school year. Looks like they're going to be in 11th grade. And that is at a tuition rate up to what we pay to Co-Brown, with transportation to be provided for by the parents.
Okay, do we have a second? I have a second. All right, discussion. Um, and this student is continuing Pittsfield, and it's because it's the best, um, placement for that student?
Correct.
Okay, all right. All right, Katrina.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jess.
Yep.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Okay. All righty, so ongoing, incomplete board meeting test.
And sometimes after I leave, there are invoices that need to be, for questions about.
I think they've, they've signed, everything's good.
Everything's good.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. We'll see you in a few weeks.
I'll be here.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Were there any questions about the ongoing completed board meetings? Continuing to check these things off. I just, Steve Rowell, I just, I don't say his name very often, but I think it's important at this point to do so. Steve is the gentleman that came in, operated the tractor and York rake and bucket and all the rest of it. And really got both the softball field and baseball field into the state that they're in now, which is considerably better than where it was. So I just, I wanted to do a shout-out to Steve. He did it last spring. He did it again this spring. And we can't thank him enough for the efforts that he's put into that particular role. So to Steve Rowell, thank you so much.
He's moved the, for us too, right?
What's that?
He's moved the fields for us too in the past.
It was before my time, yes, yeah, so.
Would you mind sending a letter to him thanking you?
Will definitely do so.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have questions about the to-do, the to-do list, ongoing task list?
All righty, I want, it does sound, from the last time we discussed, structure of five, six, and seven, eight and similar rotation. Not that I want an update right now, but will we kind of get, and I'm just curious if anything came from.
So it's, it's been discussed at length in the leadership meetings. I'm not sure the level that it's gotten to in the five and sixth grade itself. But I definitely, it's on my agenda for our next leadership. We had to cancel this week's due to field, uh, or that. I had forgotten when I scheduled it, so I would have had an answer for tonight, and that's why I marked it as complete because it was on the agenda. We'd already had multiple discussions. But now I'll know for the next.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay, correspondence. Right, Sandy, do you think the others have correspondence?
Um, I, I just, I saw one, it looks like we had one from the green committee in Stratford. That just came into Sabre.
Oh, well.
Oh, did that go to all of you? I'm so sorry. I didn't realize.
What, what was the green?
I sent it, I sent it to the two of you. I forwarded it to you.
Yeah.
He sent it to just me.
Oh, okay.
And I forwarded it to you as the facilities committee to say, I gave him my opinions. And I said, but I really think you should have your opportunity to give opinions as well.
Then we should, then we should discuss that at a facilities meeting.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to bring that up.
That's okay. It's interesting.
Yeah, he was just asking about solar on the roof. Have we had it before? Have we thought about it? Is it feasible? He talked about EV charging stations, just things like that, you know, energy conservation-related stuff. And I just, I.
Oh, electric vehicle?
Electric vehicles, yeah, yeah, yeah. So once again, I think it'll go to facilities. That's why I asked him if he could talk to you guys directly, so.
Okay, so nobody else? Okay, all right, community calendar. You must have just.
We, we did just, we submitted it. It was pretty much an update about that website. Having the tab on there for seeking out vendors, trace people.
Okay.
And what we had done with our capital improvements so far, we mentioned the water treatment system and stuff like that.
Now, for May, we usually put the Cole Brown graduates from Stratford in it. So you might want to get a list of the Cole Brown graduates. Sort of makes it a little easier. You don't have to write anything to some graduate. List all the kids. And then we also, for June, we put our own graduates in there and congratulate them. All right, committees. Policy committee, you have a second reading here?
Do you want me to tell you about one thing or do you want to wait till somebody makes a motion?
Well, let's make the motion and then we'll discuss.
So I had one little change, one, a couple of minor changes on one of them. So I think that motion should be made separately for JIC.
Okay.
That's the one that I missed making a change for you on, so.
Okay, so you want to, want to make a motion for the other ones?
Yes, so I move we approve second reading, which is final reading for policies. DH bonded employees. And DM cash in school building.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any discussions or second reading? So we can approve this now unless somebody has some concerns. You good?
We're good.
They're good. Everybody's tired. Okay, we are so good. All right, Katrina.
Yeah.
Eric.
Yes.
Jess.
Yep.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All right, so let's move to that other policy that you have concerns about changing things. Want to make a motion and then we'll discuss the changes?
Yep, so I move we adopt for second reading policy JIC, student conduct.
All right, do we have a second? Do we have a second? All right, discussion?
Yes, so one thing I noticed that we do differently at this school that is written in here is our school board. We approve the student handbook.
Yes.
Whereas in this policy is just says the school board will review it.
Oh.
So. Uh, so that's B.
Okay.
The second paragraph that B, the last word on that first line, says, "The code of conduct at each school shall be submitted to the school board for approval."
Okay. Okay. For approval, okay.
Got it.
All right, if, are there anything else, anything else you want to change?
On the last page, you guys in the last meeting, you picked up on this. I wrote it down. I didn't have a actual text, and I'm so sorry. Letter D, parent notification of simple assaults. They just left off the words to be notified. So if you go to the third line, in parentheses, victim perpetrator occurring during the school day. To be notified when such assault causes, blah, 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 blah. So to be notified is needs to be added.
To be notified right after the word day, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, when such assault occurs, and then there's that list of things that it causes. One of you saw last time that it didn't tell us to do anything. It just was kind of hanging out there as well.
Okay, so do you want to just approve this with the two changes made or do you want to see it again?
No, I, I don't need to see it again, but there was a third one.
Okay.
So in B, on the second line, it talks about the building administration and counselors, comma, the responsibility of adopting and implementing a student code of conduct because the school board approves it.
Okay.
That I believe that, I think that we need to line out the responsibility of adopting and implementing and put the responsibility of creating the student code of conduct. So that means admin will create.
Yes.
And the school board will approve.
Yes.
So should it say created, creating and implementing? Is there one that implement, right?
Responsibility of drafting and implementing.
Yeah, drafting.
Drafting.
Okay.
Drafting and implementing, yeah.
Okay.
As long as it captures as that, yeah.
That's a good catch, okay. All right, you're good? Okay, so if we're all set, we can approve it with those three changes. And then Rob, we don't have to go through this again, but maybe you can just show, or send, include this as information in our next packet. So we see the final product.
Just JIC?
Yeah. Okay. All righty. Katrina.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jess.
Yes.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. All righty. Okay, next. After policy committee, facilities committee.
This guy's not having.
You sent some emails earlier, so that could be, owe you some information.
Yeah, so basically what I was doing was putting together a quote for the water lean-to. I've got an itemized list of all the things I need. The quotes for all the siding is tentative. I'm waiting for the ABC gentleman to get back to me. But everything else has been priced out through a couple of local vendors that I put for best prices, things like that. So that's a pretty complete list, I think, of everything that we're going to need. There is a five-hundred-dollar buffer for some unknowns, like take all the shingles off the roof. There could be a piece of sheeting or two that might need to be repaired or replaced. Can't see that until I pull it off, so I did put a five-hundred-dollar kind of contingency number on there. Collectively, it was under seven-thousand dollars in materials and we're going to do the labor in-house. So we're well below the ten-thousand-dollar, you know, line where we need to worry about that sort of thing, so we're, we're good. And we're looking at early summer. We'll, we'll get on it as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, great. Did you, did you ask him if we can order, order some of the materials from the wholesaler or?
I already got information.
Yeah.
You did? Okay, good.
But I'm gonna need to know which brand and color you were looking at. Because when I went to the siding.
I didn't have it written down. It was, it was certainty, and I remember which colors they were on the book.
Well, you narrowed it down because there was like thirty brands of siding and certainty was one of them, so that's good to hear, but I need a color now.
I have a book at home. We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
All right, so we're good? All right, food service committee, we're gonna work on that in June.
Education committee, yep, we had another meeting on April fifteenth. We interviewed a candidate for the science teacher position. And so we, you know, approved that, so hopefully they accepted the position. We were also informed that they will need to fill their special ed director position. So, so they will be hosting and doing interviews for that, so hopefully they have another meeting hopefully soon for that. And then we just reviewed the annual plan some, so. Busy over there on the hiring front.
Okay, wellness committee, we had a meeting today and we can, we worked on the survey. I think that Natalie's gonna have you wordsmith some things because we added a few other questions. It was really short last year. So I think that's gonna be completed. We did discuss for next year, bringing, adding something to the wellness policy about the energy drinks. There's a real problem with the energy drinks. And so not that if the kids are, you know, if kids are drinking it at the bus stop and they drink it on the bus, whatever. But once they walk into the building from the school day from eight-thirty to three-ten, I think we said, we would like to say no energy drinks. So Jamie, the nurse, is gonna be getting some health information, medical information to provide some more rationale for that decision. So once that is updated, we'll bring the wellness policy back to the board for the board to take a look at that with the rationale, like all the medical information about the energy drinks. To ask to approve that, and then we would hope to implement those changes next year. So it wouldn't happen this year. I guess there's a major problem with these energy drinks. Little kids even are coming to school with energy drinks, not just the middle school, elementary school children. So anyway, that's that with the wellness committee. Transportation? Nope. Okay, athletic committee, we haven't met. Baseball and softball, I think, are going well. The new baseball coaches, well, it's a baseball coach with, I think, his son is also assisting him. He's fantastic. I mean, it's really wonderful. He's so patient with the kids. He's very knowledgeable. He's working really well with, with the whole team. And it's a building year because we have a lot of young players. We even have, I think, five kids that have never played baseball before. So it's a building, definitely building. And he's just encouraging, teaching. He is the perfect person, especially for this year, I will say that. I'm so pleased. And his son also is working with him, so he's got his own assistant, which is great. All right. And I think the softball team's doing well, from what I understand. Right, they always do well. Okay, we have for school board, nothing. Damn committee, nothing?
Nothing, but I can just give, just a tiny little update on damn. We have not heard back yet about the executive council and governor yet, but I anticipate almost any day I think we'll hear something. I did go up to the dam with Greg so that he could see what it consists of, and we did verify that it's free-flowing, clear of any debris. We're gonna go back, starting now, we'll be going back every two weeks to look at that. It'll either be Greg and someone else or Greg and me. But never go alone is basically our rule, so. And we did use the side-by-side to go down there. It worked beautifully. It is as rutted as ever, and there's debris everywhere from the winter, you know, trees and branches and everything else. But we were able to get down that road and we'll continue to do so.
You were on the side-by-side with him?
With Greg going down the road?
Yeah.
That would have been me, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Kevin was, Kevin was working at the church. He said, I saw the side-by-side and there were two people on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I was the one driving. Greg was like, I'm gonna let you drive this first time, so.
It's so unbelievable. No, but now with the new cell coverage and once we don't have, you know, actually having to clean that out, are we still going to have two people going down there? I mean, if we, I know before there was no cell coverage, but now we have the cell tower. Will that change?
We assume every time we go down that we have some cleanup to do. This time, if we had brought the proper equipment, we would have done a little bit of cleanup because there was some debris, but not bad. So when we go back, it'll probably be next week during vacation week when we go back. Or when he and someone else goes back, they'll bring the chess waiters and go out there and clean away as much debris as we can. We just got to keep it away as much as we possibly can, like the folks in the dam bureau told us and our engineers told us. That intake causes basically a stream-like effect across that pond. It's always moving in that direction. So if anything falls in the water.
I was just thinking about this whole side-by-side thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're being automated to the dam, help, it's on.
Oh, no, it's not, it's not, it's not designed for that. It's a, it's an actual vehicle.
But I thought that you, I thought that the police said that you could use it on the main road if there was a car.
Nope.
It's registered.
It's registered and everything. Yeah, we have license plates. It's inspected by the chief. It's, it's truly roadworthy, but we're allowed to a certain distance from the building. So we go to the gas station in one direction, and we go to the dam in the other direction, both are within that driving distance that we're allowed to do.
Okay, good. Well, we're safe, somebody said.
We were very safe.
All right. All righty, anybody else? You have other, you said?
No, the other you guys took care of earlier. It was a student request.
All right, so we know that our next meeting is as Cole Brown, right? And please, I guess we have to get another notification about that survey. So it's gotta be done. I think she said April twenty-fifth. So if you haven't completed it, please complete that. And, and then we're looking at, did you say, when is Melissa coming?
Melissa will come back on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
That'll also be when I have the first draft of the wish list and the new budget update and all the rest of it, so. Pretty good sense by then, I think, of where we're at, if there's any room for wiggling around.
Okay, so then probably on the twenty-fifth would be the day we'd have the workshop.
Oh, oh, the work, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Don't we usually do it the last meeting, like, right?
The last is.
Probably is this year, yeah.
Is it?
I had, all the years. So, yeah.
I think it is.
Is that a problem? No? Okay, all right, we can figure that out.
Because it would be half-day for the school anyways, right?
Right.
If we come in here around three o'clock or whatever, they'll be, they won't be interrupting.
Yeah, okay, so we'll talk more about that. And we'll have the, hopefully we'll have a lot of data you can prepare for us, right?
For the workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, what I haven't heard yet is specifically what you want the agenda to look like. You and I haven't had a chance to talk.
Right, I know that we always like to get, like, we'll have the survey results and then we'll have, like, testing data.
Yep.
Right, and as we get closer, I just wanted to give you a heads up of the test results. All right, all right, good?
Good.
All righty, motion?
Motion for adjourned.
Okay, second, little second. Katrina.
Yeah.
Eric.
Yes.
Jess.
Yeah.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
Time is eight fifty-five P M.
All right, we get all. Oh, you need some of the assurances. Can you show the, are you guys on this? Okay, but I usually do the meeting. I usually.
I didn't know that.
Yes, okay, this is still.
Hold on a second, Abel, don't, that's not so.
Okay. The meeting has just been adjourned, but I'm going to stay and sign the general assurances for twenty twenty-six. And this is just to make sure that we receive all of our federal funding.